Okay, we will reconvene to public session. Attendants, all board members and the student trustee are here. We'll do roll, well, that's roll call. We have public comments, agenda and non-agenda items. So pursuant to Board Policy number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person or 30 minutes per topic. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point of the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President, Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum. On non-agenda items, public comment cards are available. The information table at the rear of the boardroom from the Recording Secretary are online. We ask that all speakers come to the podium to address the board. Thank you. And so we'll go ahead and have the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ms. Gaines?
Right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. We have. Okay. And now we got the agenda approval. And I believe.
I would like to. Sorry about that. I would like to suggest that we move item 14.3 to information items. It is a first reading and so it will become 15.2. And so that means next month that will come back into the action items.
Okay, can we have a motion on approving the agenda with that? Change?
We will approve of the agenda with the move of 14.3 to 15.2.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, advice? Approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote 5-0. Okay, now we'll go down to open forum and non-agenda items. Okay, see, we have. Is it M? Himmler, is that it? Trying to read it off here.
Ritz.
Ritz, oh, I'm sorry.
I can raise your.
I was thinking maybe you're a pharmacist.
So thank you very much for allowing me to comment. So I'm here today on behalf of the Civic and Voter Engagement Committee. And so what we wanted to let you know is that we're having a sort of very interesting and unique opportunity on the campus of ABC. So, so on behalf of Professor Tina McDermott, Ms. Michelle Hernandez, Professor Vento, and then your student trustee Cory Barnes, we're going to be putting on what we're calling conversations with congressional candidates. So actually, I think, you know, totally to the credit of Professor McDermott, we have managed to secure an invitation for candidate Christie Smith and Congressman Mike Garcia to come to campus ahead of their election in November and answer questions that are, we are actually working on. And then some questions that we're going to synthesize from the student body to talk to our community about their candidacy, about why they think they should represent California 27. And so, you know, ABC, I think, should be honored that we're going to have them here on our campus. So candidate Smith, Christie Smith, she will be on campus on Tuesday, September 27th at, September 27th at 3 o'clock PM. And then Congressman Mike Garcia will be on campus on Wednesday, October 5th at 3 o'clock PM. I don't have, because we're waiting for the campaigns to give the final approval for our brochures or handouts. So I don't have any of them for you today. But as soon as we get that final approval and we could submit this publicly, we will make sure that you get, you know, these information sheets. Any questions?
Okay, no question.
Okay, so we look forward to having you there. Thank you very much.
Okay. Tina W?
Good evening. We are here, excuse me, we are here tonight to ask Antelope Valley College to take a second look at the selection of Schools First Federal Credit Union as a third-party administrator for the voluntary tax-deferred programs. Over the years, we have experienced when Schools First becomes the third-party administrator, the 457 provider selection is reduced to only the Schools First program. In the past, Schools First has said other 457 plan providers will be grandfathered in, meaning contributions would be accepted into existing accounts only. However, new accounts could not be established. And in some cases, accounts that were grandfathered in were eventually eliminated and where participants could no longer even contribute to their existing 457 plan. For example, this is. Can I give it to you, Patty, or? Okay. Sorry. This is example of the Schools First approved provider list for a local school district in our community. If you note, the only program available to participants is the school district's forfeit, excuse me, is the Schools First program. Currently, Antelope Valley College has 15 457 providers for the employees to choose from. And that's showing on the second page. Why is Schools First eliminating freedom of choice for the 457 program, but not the 403Bs? When a district uses a third-party administrator that focuses solely on impartial plan administration and no product sales, all 457 plan providers have remained available for existing contributions and new accounts. Also, third-party administrators offer educational retirement account information for employees. This type of information is not exclusive to just one type of third-party administrator. So we would like to ask Antelope Valley College to please take another look at this topic. And a third-party administrator that does not sell financial products, leveling the playing field for all of us in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy Hayes?
Well, good evening. Nice to see some familiar faces. A little background on the selection of a third-party administrator that monitors the deposits into the 457 and 403D program. And this references to Schools First. So I'll go back in time a little bit. You know, the theme years ago was shop local, keep your tax base strong. And there was two cities. One was incorporated Palmdale in 1962 and Lancaster in 1977. Prior to that time, we were concerned about tax bases. Dollars went down to LA, we never got the services back, so we incorporated. Our concern now is if Schools First is the plan administrator for the sale, you know, for the 403B and 457 plans, that tax base could be jeopardized and support Orange County's community college. And we wouldn't want that. So I served on Lancaster's first two city councils. And the theme was shop local and keep the tax base very strong. There were two papers that supported that. This all happened to be a reporter from the Ledger Gazette in the room here, an excellent reporter, and also the Valley Press. And that's the reason we incorporated. But we see this wonderful college here, which I'm an alumni. If they pay schools first or any third-party administrator sells product, it's against your best interests. So there are two types of third-party administrators. One with a sales force and one with no sales force and focused just on administration of the 403B and 457 plans. That's what they're supposed to do. In this case, Schools First's sales force is mainly located, is located in Orange County. That's where the home office is. So that revenue would go down to them. Only what you see is storefronts, but the sales team for mortgages, every type of financial product would go down below. And that's true. What do they sell? Everything. Every type of financial product. And again, that would go down below. They would go to Orange County. And so we suggest that you don't use a third-party administrator sells financial product. But what would happen also is Cal Stirs is one of the 457 providers. Their cost is $53 nationwide for approximately the same program. We can't analyze all of them. It's $138. So you're taking away from the choice from the employees here. But also, you know, giving them a higher-priced program, in our opinion, that's just one. There's an article in that packet from the Antelope Valley Press pointing out that Lancaster School District and Westside School District both said no to Schools First because they wanted to protect their tax base. And I could see the bond issue is working quite nicely at the school. And you could see along Avenue K and also 30th Street. There's also a letter from from the former president, which actually in 2016 understood that if they pick a firm like Schools First, that is not in their best interest. So they didn't. Let's see if I can just wrap this up real quick. If I was to wrap this up, it would be what's best for AV College and our community. This selection would show, by the way, there must have been a selection process of request for proposal. And there should be a scoring, some type of method why Schools First was picked. And by the way, we're not in this for ourselves. I have to point that out. We are in the financial business. We only have 25 clients in 25 years. This is about my alma mater. This is Antelope Valley College. It's about a tax base and also doing the right thing for the employees. So in closing, we would want Schools First to thrive like any other credit union, but not act in the capacity of a third-party administrator. It's not good for the employees or our community. So that's why I'm here. And it's a deeper subject and it really should be explored. And we can back up everything we say. And we've done a lot of homework on this. And hopefully, we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hutchinson?
Hi, my name is Dave Hutchinson. I'm a CPA here in Lancaster. My family moved up here in 1964. I went to junior college here into Northridge after that. Came back up here and opened up an accounting practice. I remember many years ago when Circuit City was going to open up their first store here, and I was so excited. Circuit City's coming in, I'm going to be able to buy all the electronics I want, do that sort of thing. But I also had a lot of clients that that were in, I had one that owned the local radio shop. Radio shop shop, a couple of them that owned the, their electronic, two electronic stores, Duke and Slims. After Circuit City came in, within about three years, all those stores closed. And everybody's, you know, at first, I'll look at all these people we're bringing in, getting new jobs. Well, the families now, they're out looking for work because they were put out of business. I, when I opened up my accounting practice, probably within the first year or two, I was approached by CPA that worked for, that had some interest with, I don't know if it was Lockheed or Rockwell or somebody like that. And he asked me if I was willing to buy tax returns through their credit union. And I thought that was kind of strange that he would ask me that. And said, well, you know, we get all these people and we can go toward those people and we'll get those people to come to you if you want. You got to pay us a fee, a percentage of what you earn, but that's how we're going to, we'll make your practice bigger and better. These people are a bunch of carpetbaggers. They're coming in here and there's, there's nothing wrong with them selling their product. But why not on a level playing field? Why give them the opportunity to walk in and be first on the list and be able to hand out something to everyone? When we've got mortgage companies, I have probably 15 clients that are in the mortgage business. And they're all, they're all local guys that work for Gem Mortgage. And you know, name five of them along the street and some of them are bigger. But they don't get the advantage of somebody calling from Santa Ana and saying, hey, we got a loan here for you. Why don't you come by and pick it up? And by the way, be sure we get the money here because I don't, I don't, I'm assuming, don't know for sure, but I'm assuming that probably not a lot of the upper management of Schools First live up here in the Antelope Valley. They're probably not your neighbors. They're probably not the ones that are paying property taxes and dealing with our schools, but they have no problem taking our money. I have a personal problem with attorney, excuse me, physicians and stuff like that. They would come up here and dentists, they come up here, apply their services here, but this place isn't good enough for them to live in. So they moved to the valley and you know, had a client that had a dental practice up here. He graduated from from USC and he wanted to give his, I got like two minutes. He graduated from USC, wanted to give his practice away to somebody. Went to USC, posted on the board, said, all I ask for you to do is come into the Antelope Valley, work in my office, work in the office for two years. I'll give you the office, keep the rents the same, keep my fees the same for one year. He had no offers. Bunch of offers from people who were willing to come from the valley and work on Tuesdays and Thursdays and take their money out of town. But this is, I think this is the problem, that one of the problems we're having with companies that are willing to come in. They, they're more sophisticated in their approach to be able to attract the business from us. Last time I've spoken something like this, three or four years ago, here came four people from Schools First, all with their little briefcases on the side, all sat down in three-piece suits. I'm not against three-piece suits. I used to work downtown, but it just feels like these people are robbing us. You know, let us, at least let us fight on the same, at the same level with the same ammunition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Matt Sessi, is it?
Good evening.
Before you get started, I just want to remind speakers, you have three minutes and if there's a timer and a couple of folks have gone over, but I just want to remind everyone this three-minute timeline.
I also went to ABC for my junior work, reporting getting my bachelor's. I'm also here to talk about Schools First. Recently received correspondence from ABC Administration stating that the TPA selected Schools First was to ensure employees are receiving the services they deserve. However, by doing so, the district is providing Schools First with a captive audience to sell its products. This is because employees who want to save for retirement must go through Schools First. Granted, Schools First's monopoly stifles competition at the detriment of both employees and local commerce. So what can ABH or AB College employees expect? Well, first, as Tim said, higher fees. The current plan, Cal Stirs, was ranked number one in fees according to 403D compare. Schools First Nationwide Program is ranked 30th. Unfortunately, as the district's trusted middleman, Schools First is the first and last stop for many employees when they're looking to open a retirement plan. For example, according to an article in Orange County Register, teachers thought they were getting a great deal with zero administration fees, but then they began tallying up the hidden fees on their Nationwide Schools First programs, and they were stunned. They had asked about lower-cost funds, but said that they were not given those options. And of course, they wouldn't be because they, Schools First would want to offer only their option. According to the Wall Street Journal, Nationwide makes additional payments to Schools First when teachers invest in higher-cost programs. The arrangement represents an undisclosed conflict and Schools First doesn't disclose the total costs, which are usually double some of the other providers. As Tina mentioned, limited choice. In our experience, when Schools First becomes TPA, they will eliminate all the lower-cost 457 plan providers such as Vanguard, TI Craft, Cal Stirs, and only allow new accounts to be opened through the more expensive Schools First Nationwide program. Employees become a captive audience. They're subject to constant advertising. Plan eligibility notices and retirement workshops become sales pitches. If you need to get a form for your retirement account, you have to go through their website and you'll see more advertisements. I included an advertisement in that packet. It was advertising getting a lower rate on your auto loan by getting rid of perhaps some other businesses like Edwards Federal Credit Union Auto Loan, trading in for a lower rate. By the way, it's not a lower rate. I had put in two in there. It's actually 1% more expensive. But that's what the teachers and employees of ABC will see is that advertisement saying it's a lower rate. They can expect some longer transaction times. Some administrators can process transactions same day. When we work with Schools First, it usually takes between one and three weeks to process a retract, a transaction, like a withdrawal or a transfer. Their website's harder to use. You have to get another password, another website to figure out to log into. Other TPAs don't require you to log in to anything and you can have simple into the websites. District employees do not deserve higher fees, fewer options, captive advertising, longer transaction times, and another website to access and figure out. In 2016, ABC rejected Schools First in favor of low-cost option Cal Stirs. We asked that ABC make the right choice again, putting employees first, eliminating potential conflicts of interest, and choosing a TPA that does not solicit its own products. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Okay, want to go to that now? Okay. Next speaker would be Jason Bowen.
Good evening and happy Monday. I'd like to share something that I learned over the last couple of days. Pretty remarkable. It regards the use of HERF funds. What Compton College is doing through their cafeteria, we currently don't have a cafeteria that's functioning. They allocated about $300,000 of HERF funds to feed students. So what's, what, you know, in the past, they had some funding for 150 free meals a day, Monday through Friday, all semester, all year. Pretty amazing. One of the goals of HERF, this is what I read on the internet, so who knows, is, you know, to increase engagement with the college campus. So they're looking at their 150 free meals a day. And what they realize is we could perhaps get students to engage more fully on campus if we could offer more meals. So they used $300,000 of their HERF funds to offer 450 meals a day. These are $5 meals. We're talking burger and fries and a drink. But 450 free meals, this is not only for students, but for faculty and staff. Also, all you have to do is show your student ID or your employee ID. And so you go to campus, go to class, go get your free meals. 450 free meals a day. I asked Compton College community member earlier this morning about how many students do they see each day participating in this program? And they said 400 a day participate in this program. So that's just an idea. I thought it was pretty exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Chavez?
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Chavez. I'm a classified employee here at ABC. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to address you tonight. My being here today is due to having a concern with the minimal efforts I have seen from the college to increase the wages of their employees as our economy suffers from increasing food, housing, and living expenses. I'm a single woman with no kids, and yet I'm having a hard time making ends meet. How much more am I coworkers with families and a household to support? Naturally, my first instinct is, was to inquire about receiving a raise. After inquiring with HR, I was told that there are no opportunities to receive raises, only reclassification and obviously, of course, get a promotion in the job. If you are familiar with that process, you know how arduous it is and more often than not unsuccessful. I am disheartened that ABC does not reward employees for doing a job well done in the role they are already in. Instead, an employee has to be doing a job outside of their job description and then prove they are doing so while the college continues to benefit from the hard work. Moreover, if one were to be approved for a reclassification, it would not take effect until the next fiscal year. This is no way to, this is no way to support your employees' current need. I'm thankful for the step increases, but that only covers a fraction of the increasing expenses. I'm saying this to illustrate how outdated the state, the step raises are. Be kind, serve students. I wholeheartedly agree. But don't forget to support your employees. I'm filled with gratitude to work at ABC and I know that ABC values their employees. I would not be in attendance here tonight if I felt I would not be heard. Therefore, I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Hendricks?
Good evening, Dr. Zellet and members of the board. I'm hobbling a little bit. I tried to get in a little workout before coming over. I'm here representing the Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers. I'm the lead negotiator. We are going to be starting official negotiations Thursday. We've got, our team has been working together all summer on and off. We've had several meetings. We're making a lot of progress. We've got a great team. I'm really excited and I'm looking forward to negotiations. It's going to be a hard job, but I think we've got a lot of groundwork in place. I would like to officially thank Howard Enbridge. We signed the MOU for the Class Climate Survey. We had a lot of really good discussion, a couple of really good discussions over that. And both of them had some good ideas for when we get to the permanent or the real Article 8. I'd also like to thank Van Rider. He was on call several times when I know I didn't know, but Kathy Osborne would say, hey, Van, what happens with this? Or why can't we do that? So we've really gotten a lot of support from a lot of different people and I want to publicly thank all of them. And we've got some new members of the team. We've got a new adjunct member and Tamara from counseling. So I think we're going to make some good progress. So thank you. You'll be hearing from me again.
Thank you. Okay, going down to item 11, presentations. 11.1, presentation on National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Good evening. Okay, yeah, presentations. So I'm Michelle Hernandez, Associate Dean of Student Life. And what I wanted to talk to you all about tonight is our National Hispanic Heritage Month. National Hispanic Heritage Month runs September 15th through October 15th and celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestry is from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And it is also significant because of the Independence Days that it represents. So September 15th is significant because it's the anniversary of Latin America countries such as Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And in Mexico, additionally, in Mexico, Chile, they celebrate their Independence Days on September 16th and September 18th respectively. And then we have Columbus Day or Dia de la Raza, which is on October 12th. And that falls within the 30 days of Hispanic Heritage Month. So with that, I wanted to let you know that there is a cross-section of the campus that's planning and has been working to plan different events and activities to celebrate and commemorate this particular month. And so we have faculty, administrators, staff. We have students who have been involved. We have from every area on campus. So it really is a cross-section of the campus that's come together to put these events on for the campus and for the community. So we are starting this week on September 14th. We have some faculty professional developments that are specifically outlined during this time to address Hispanic Heritage Month. And so we have Deconstructing the Myth of the Monolithic Latino. And we have Encuentro, which is Activating Our Art and our Culture. And so with those, we're going to have Um, and so with those, we're gonna have um some of the faculty come up and they're gonna talk to you about um what else we have going on with um the campus as far as Puente. But many of the faculty um who are involved in Puente are also involved in the planning. Um, students um will also participate in Cafe y Charla. So that is a time for them to get together, have some pandulce and some cafe, um and then sit around and have some conversation, real meaningful candid conversations that are critical and within the community. Um, October twelfth will be Hispanic Fiesta. Or um Hispanic Fiesta is going to be um a campus-wide event. We have different departments who will represent different Latin American countries. And so they will do everything in the expression of that culture. So there will be attire that's worn. There'll be traditional um artifacts. There'll be information that's given about that particular country, and students will go around um with a passport, and they'll get to visit the countries, and then they use that passport to get a Latin-inspired meal. Um, so it really has been something that students have really taken to, and so um we tried it online. It's not the same. Um, and there's no food, so it's really not the same. Um, and then we um are gonna wrap up um the month with pop cultural representations and Latin and Latinos. And then um for a big community kind of woo-hoo, here's the ex- escalation point. Para la gente, which is a community celebration from eleven to three on October fifteenth. Um, we'll be here in the Fine Arts Quad. We have some Afro-Brazilian dancers who are coming, some salsa dancing will be happening. We're doing some paint-by-numbers. We'll have a lot of different activities for the community. And so we're um hopeful that they'll all come out and celebrate um with us as as well as each other. If you want more information about the different events that we're hosting, not only during this month, but also just ongoing um here at ABC, we do have the website that is listed in the last page of the presentation. And without further ado, Puente.
Good evening, and thank you, President Zellet and the board for inviting us to share about the Puente program, which we're very proud of. I am Tino Garcia, an English instructor and one of the co-coordinators.
And my name is Tanya McGinnis. I'm a counselor here at ABC and also one of the co-coordinators.
Mesa Nicholas, who's our third core co-coordinator and a counselor, could not be here, but she is viewing on Zoom. We'd also like to thank our advisory team, um Michelle Hernandez, who just spoke, Riley Dwyer, and Heidi Williams. So ABC is a proud Hispanic-serving institution, but we can serve our growing Hispanic population better. You can see the chart on the right shows how much growth we've had over the past decade. We're close to sixty percent now Latinx students. And that's great, but the problem is that a lot of our students, not just our students, but across the country are not um attaining their bachelor's degrees. So only fifteen percent are actually attaining those degrees. Far fewer are getting graduate or professional degrees. So that's where Puente comes in. Puente is designed to help fix the problems in the Latinx educational pipeline. It does this through its mission and its model. So this started back in nineteen eighty-one um at Chabot College. It's now at UC Berkeley. And they noticed low uh patterns of enrollment in writing courses and a lack of uh counseling and support. So they created a model that is interdisciplinary and is focused on writing, counseling, and mentoring. And they're soon gonna add STEM courses to that. The mission of Puente is to increase the number of underserved students who enroll in four-year schools, earn degrees, and then come back to their community as mentors and leaders to the next generation.
So within the Puente model also exists the California Community College Success Factors Framework, one of our themes in past years here at ABC. In a research study published in twenty thirteen, RP group found that students are more more likely to succeed when they are directed, focused, nurtured, engaged, connected, and valued. And the Puente program exhibits all six factors for these students. Not only for the Puente students that are actually in the program, but beyond. It goes beyond the classroom. It's sort of a social ripple effect. As we'll see that these students not only have a hand that are guiding them towards the university, but their hand is also reaching back for those Cohort One students, to their siblings, to their community, to their peers, and to their family and friends. I, we listed a couple of examples from each of those success factors. I know we're limited on time. But basically, within the HD courses, there's goal setting. They meet with a counselor twice per semester for their ed planning. There's career research in the HD one oh three career planning class that's part of the Puente program. There's lots of what we call cariño or care outside of the classroom from their faculty members, from their staff members, from their coordinators, and from their peers themselves. There's a one-on-one mentorship component of it. So each Puente student gets matched up with a professional mentor, whether they're in the community or faculty here. We have quite a few faculty that are mentors, and they are engaged and um connected. Many of our Puente students are involved on campus, in campus communities, um clubs, they're officers of clubs. They are student workers, and they fulfill leadership components that way. It is a cohort structure. They are, so they are connected. And there's deep, vulnerable conversations that happen within the classrooms and amongst their peers, which um go towards self-efficacy and self-resiliency. So things that we can't quantify exist here, and we can see that climate portraying portraying through the college and to their peers. Okay, so how is this working and is it working? Yes, it is. We've only been in um at here at ABC for one year, but some results that we can quantify from our year one. We represent, the Puente students represent the ABC general population when it comes to the Hispanic Latinx and first-generation students. As far as academics go, our Pu- our Cohort One students had an average three point two GPA. They also completed their transfer-level English course in their first year at eighty-one percent completion rate. And the amount of units they're taking, it's full-time, averaging twelve and a half units.
So the statistics and the practices are uh testified to the power of Puente, but maybe the most powerful testimony is the voice of our students. So we would like to share with you the voice of two of our students. Um, the first one is a video, and it's by Liliana Rodriguez, and um I'm hoping we can all hear this in the room.
Hello, my name is Liliana Rodriguez, and this is my last semester at Alamo Valley College. I'm a Puente student, and what urged me to sign up with Puente is I remember doing the Zoom meeting. They said that they were Hello, my name is Liliana Rodriguez, and this is my last semester at Alamo Valley College. I'm a Puente
So we have one more uh student testimonial. This is another one of our wonderful Cohort One Puente students, Melanie Oriana.
Good evening, everybody. I would just like to thank the advisors to for letting me be here today. Um, being in Puente has taught me so much. Before coming to ABC, I actually was very hesitant and confused on where to start. But I simply navigated my way towards the ABC website, and I came across their video that they had posted on the ABC website, and it immediately intrigued me into joining the Puente program. So I then contacted Ms. McGinnis, and she immediately assisted me with my ed plan, and that helped me furthermore in my educational endeavor. As for Mr. Garcia, he has helped me tremendously with uh learning how to story tell and uh articulate my literature. So that will help me tremendously in my personal insight questions that I will use for my, when I transfer to a four-year university. As for Mrs. San Nicolas, who cannot be here today unfortunately, she has advocated with various resources that will also help me tremendously uh transferring to a four-year university. And I could not be more blessed and thankful for being alongside these advisors. They have truly made here my first year at ABC one to remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. And just uh looking ahead a little bit, so our Cohort One, we had twenty students. We had four classes. We took them on a campus tour to three universities. This year, we have twenty-five students, five Puente courses. We're gonna do HSI campus tours. We're using our Cohort One um as embedded tutors, as peer mentors, and we're helping them uh prepare their transfer applications. And in the future, we hope to integrate more math and science and maybe add an additional cohort if we can support that. We want to integrate more faculty professional development through Puente, through the mentors, to change the culture at at ABC. And um we might need more resources to do that, but um so far, it's been a success. And so, Tanya, can you close it out?
So in closing, if we can leave you with one final thought, and that's the logo of Puente. It has two bridges going in both directions. We have year one and year two students on each side with Puente and ABC in the middle, building the foundation for what we hope to have the Puente mission accomplished when our students move on to the university, that they return to the AV community and a place that they call home, which is here at ABC. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board? None? Excellent presentation. We have uh item eleven point two, presentation of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Zellet, Student Board Member. Patty, tonight I'm presenting the twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget report. The topics discussed in this presentation include the budget timeline, the student-centered funding formula, the twenty-one, twenty-two unaudited actuels, an overview of HERF, highlights from the enacted budget, the assumptions used to develop the district's budget, the twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget report, and projections for twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. For twenty-two, twenty-three, the standard financial reporting deadlines are in effect, and the district anticipates uh it'll be able to meet the requirements for financial reporting, which will include submitting the annual financial and budget report to the Chancellor's Office by October tenth and submitting the twenty-one, twenty-two audit report to the Chancellor's Office by December thirty-first. Shown here is an overview of the student-centered funding formula, which calculates apportionments uh using three allocations. The base allocation is seventy percent and is based on FTES. The supplemental allocation is twenty percent and is based on counts of low-income students. And the student's success allocation, which makes up ten percent, is based on counts of outcomes in multiple categories. Continuing with SCIF, there are no plans to change the seventy, twenty, ten split. The rates will be adjusted by any enacted COLA. The COVID-nineteen emergency conditions allowance, which allowed us to use twenty-eighteen, nineteen FTES, will be available in twenty-two, twenty-three with conditions and through an application process. Okay, the SCIF hold harmless provision is active through twenty-four, twenty-five. And twenty-four, twenty-five will be the new floor for SCIF beginning in twenty-five, twenty-six. Continuing again with SCIF, this slide from the Chancellor's Office shows the impact of SCIF to the district. Previously, we were funded based on FTES. This slide shows that annually we s- receive approximately ten million dollars additional from the transition to SCIF. Shown here are one-time restricted higher education emergency relief funds, or HERF, including the breakdown between institutional aid, minority-serving institution aid, and student aid. Between HERF one, two, and three, the district received forty point four million in institutional aid, three point seven million in MSI, and twenty-nine point four in student funding. The student portion has been fully distributed, and fifteen point one million remains unallocated between institutional and minority-serving institutional aid as of June thirtieth. Shown here are the twenty-one, twenty-two unaudited actuels for the unrestricted general fund, starting with a beginning fund balance of thirty-nine point three million, revenue total of ninety-two point four million. Expenditures and other outgo total eighty-nine point five million, leaving an ending fund balance of forty-two point two million. Assignments include reserve for pension stabilization, capital projects protection, IT reserve, and others. After assignments, the unassigned ending fund balance is twenty point seven million, equating to a reserve of twenty-three point two percent. In twenty-one, twenty-two, general fund revenue, which includes both unrestricted and restricted funds totaled a hundred and forty point two million, of which twenty-two percent is federal revenue, sixty-seven percent is state revenue, and ten percent is local revenue. Twenty-one, twenty-two, general fund expenditures totaled a hundred and thirty-seven point five million. And the percentage breakdown between the categories is shown on this slide. Overall, salaries and benefits make up fifty-five percent of expenditures, which is significantly lower than prior years due to one-time COVID funds, which are included in other outgo. This is for both unrestricted and restricted general fund. For twenty-one, twenty-two, for all funds, revenues total two hundred and four point zero million, and expenditures total two hundred and thirty-nine point two million, resulting in a deficit of thirty-five point one million, due primarily to the Measure AV funds being expended. The adopted budget includes information from the enacted budget. For California Community Colleges, the enacted budget includes a six point five, six percent cost of living adjustment, the hold harmless provision sunset in twenty-four, twenty-five, as previously mentioned, and a new floor is established in twenty-five, twenty-six. The enacted budget provides six hundred million for SCIF base increase along with a six point five percent COLA for various categorical programs. One-time funding includes eight hundred and forty million for deferred maintenance, six hundred and fifty million in discretionary block grants for pandemic-related issues. The enacted budget includes four hundred and three million for twenty-two continuing projects throughout the state. We point out on the spot twenty-six new positions at the Chancellor's Office. Uh, in May, a multi-year roadmap between the new administration and California Community Colleges was released. Um, this roadmap calls for enhanced timely transfers, improved rates of completion, reduced excess units, closure of equity gaps, and better alignment of the system with K-12 and workforce needs. The following three slides show changes from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three for various programs. The largest change occurs with SCIF due to the six point five percent COLA and base increase. Other notable changes include two hundred million in ongoing funding for part-time faculty health insurance and six point five si- six percent COLA again for uh the various categorical programs. In preparing the twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget, the district used the In preparing the twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget, the district used the state enacted budget along with other information and assumptions. Including rate increases for stirs and purrs, step and calm increases and staffing changes, including budgeting for open positions. COLA was not applied in the out-year projections and the budget does not include ECA for twenty-two, twenty-three. As there is an application pro- process requiring conditions be met. Shown here are the rate assumptions provided by the Chancellor's office used in building our budget. The twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget for the unrestricted general fund has a beginning fund balance of forty-two point two million. Revenue is projected to total ninety-one point five million and expenditures and other outgoing are projected to be eighty-eight point three million. Leaving an ending fund balance of forty-five point three million. Assignments again include reserve for pension stabilization, capital projects, protection, IT reserve and others. After assignments, the unassigned ending fund balance is projected to be twenty-three point nine million, equating to a reserve of twenty-seven point one percent. In twenty-three, twenty-four, the district is projecting a surplus of nine hundred and ten thousand. Resulting in an unassigned ending fund balance of twenty-four point eight million or a reserve of twenty-seven point four percent. And in twenty-four, twenty-five, the district expects expenditures to exceed revenues. Due to declining enrollment and increasing expenses resulting in a deficit of six point one million. After assignments, the ending fund balance is projected to be eighteen point eight million, equating to a reserve of twenty point three percent. In twenty-two, twenty-three, general fund revenue, which includes both unrestricted and restricted funds, is projected to be a hundred and fifty-seven million. Of that seventeen percent is federal revenue, seventy-five is state revenue and eight percent is other local revenue. Again, in twenty-two, twenty-three, general fund expenditures total a hundred and fifty-three point eight million. And the percentage breakdown between the categories is shown on the slide. Overall salaries and benefits make up fifty-six percent of expenditures. Again, that is low due to one-time COVID funds, HERF funds. Which are included in other outgo. In twenty-two, twenty-three, for all funds, revenues total three hundred and nineteen point one million and expenditures are budgeted to be three hundred and forty-six point six million. Resulting in a deficit of twenty-seven point five million, again due primarily to expenditures associated with measure AV. One of the most critical components in the budgeting process is enrollment and funding is determined in large part by FTES. Shown in the second column is actual FTES and in the third column is the percent change from the prior year. As you can see, the pandemic resulted in a decrease of seventeen percent in twenty-twenty-one from nineteen-twenty. And a further drop of ten percent from those levels in twenty-one, twenty-two. The total change from nineteen-twenty to twenty-one, twenty-two is two thousand eight hundred and seven FTES, a drop of twenty-five point four percent. The projections assume that enrollment remains flat. Another key item on this slide is the difference between funded FTES in the fourth column versus the actual FTES. In twenty-two, twenty-three, the budget assumes we're funded at ten thousand two hundred and forty-one FTES. Versus actual projected FTES of eight thousand two hundred and forty-eight, a difference of nineteen point five percent. The point here being that enrollment is a critical area that needs to be addressed and there are efforts being led by the president to do that. Looking forward, we hope to see increased enrollment and need to address the enrollment challenges. The twenty-one, twenty-two financial audit will be will soon be underway. The district is planning to move forward with the emergency conditions allowance application and we look forward to expending the remainder of her. Questions.
I have two questions.
Sure.
We're listed as a single college district, but we have campuses at the airport, we have campuses in Palmdale. Has that ever been explored? To make that a multi-campus?
Right now, those are additional sites and we are a single campus district. I don't know if the history, what the history is there, but. You know.
I could address some of that too. Palmdale is actually a center which gives us additional funding. So you get additional funding for a site and there's parameters around enrollment and structures. And student services and offerings that have to be in place in order to go from a center to a campus.
Okay, and we spoke in about twenty-four, twenty-five. So what's gonna happen in twenty-four, twenty-five, the budget?
Well, twenty-four, twenty-five, we lose the benefit of the emergency conditions allowance. So we're basically on our own. So whatever our FTES are there. It's a it's a rolling three-year average that's used to calculate it, but our funding is primarily determined. By whatever our FTES are during that time and then that becomes the new floor going forward.
But did we have the emergency funding because of COVID? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Barr, I just wanted to ask you. Very impressed with the fifty-five percent, even though you explained that you used one-time funds to sort of lower that percent.
Sure.
Can you just tell us, assuming there were no one-time funds, what is the college typically run? What percent for salary and benefits?
Absolutely. So typically, using our only, if we exclude our restricted funds, excuse me, right? And we look at just the unrestricted general fund, which is typically what we look at. The college right or in the in the budget year, we're expecting around eighty-two percent. For salaries and benefits classified faculty. Any other question?
Thank you very much.
So before Vice President Barr begins with the next presentation, I would like to set the context for some of this presentation. Measure AV plans have been years in the making and conditions surrounding the execution of these plans have been in a state of continual change. Many external factors that are used to predict affordability and feasibility change sometimes daily. Making continuous reevaluation advantageous if we want to get the most out of the bond measure. For the sake of the the community and our students. Tonight, you will see in the presentation how we intend to revive the Commons project based on several factors. One, reexamination of the timeline to achieve MNO endowment goals in light of current needs and resolution language. Two, evaluation of the measure AV budget and initial allocations. Given recent years' HERF funding, higher education, emergency relief funding, sorry for those of you who don't live in our alphabet soup. And allowable expenditures. And three, historic levels of state funding for deferred maintenance and the new budget. Coupled with an extended timeline to expend those funds. In the upcoming presentation, you will see the slide from last spring that recommended that the Commons building be put on hold. Not discontinued, put on hold. There are two critical elements that I've taken into consideration that were of a different priority to last spring's administration. One, I am willing to repurpose the ten point five million not yet deposited in the endowment, but pay attention. You will see that the endowment does not get ignored. And two, I am willing to repurpose ITS funds that were set aside before copious dollars were granted for technology and infrastructure. Through the Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds. Repurposing those dollars covers the shortfall in the Commons projects and it allows us to follow through on this promise to the community. In addition, due to the historic levels of funding for deferred maintenance and a more than five-year timeline on which to expend those funds. The interest gained on the current twenty-four and a half million already invested in the MNO endowment. Can be reinvested back into the account, allowing for the growth of those dollars. This decision to reactivate the Commons project is a result of the desire to ensure that Antelope Valley College is poised for the future. And that our community gets the most out of the measure that it voted for. This proposal does not detract from any public promise. In fact, it strengthens Antelope Valley College's promise and response to the community. By finding a way to achieve both ends, just on an alternate time schedule. Apologies to our community constituents who may have heard misinformation, but know that I am always available for direct conversation. I truly believe that this is a win-win, student and community-centered decision. And we are pleased to illustrate how this is possible. Thank you, Barr.
Thank you, President Zellet. Thank you. Good evening again, President Zellet, Board of Trustees, and Board Member Patty. Tonight I'm presenting a construction update. This is an informational update on our capital projects. And I'll begin by giving an overview of the measure AV budget as it stands now. Provide supporting figures for a proposed reallocation of funds to the Commons. Provide information on scheduled maintenance funds and the endowment and then conclude by giving an update on the projects. Measure AV began with an overall budget of three hundred and fifty million. Of that three hundred and fifty million, twenty-five point eight million went to debt reduction. Thirty-five million was budgeted for the MNO endowment, four million for bond personnel audit expenses. Then we budgeted and expended funds on various smaller non-building projects such as design standards, equipment, IT projects. And we have four point nine million budgeted for program management and general conditions and logistics. These non-construction or administrative planning and other expenses total seventy-seven point one million. Out of three hundred and fifty million, that then leaves two hundred and seventy-two point nine million boxed in red. For construction-related projects. In the next column over is the amount expended and in the final column is the remaining budget by project. Of the two hundred and seventy-two point nine million allocation for building and construction, swing space one was nine point eight million. Measure AV portion of the Palmdale Center was six point two million. Campus security was eight point seven million and Sage Hall was twenty-eight point one million. The total budget for the completed projects was fifty-two point eight million. Again. Taking fifty-two point eight million from two hundred and seventy-two point nine million leaves a budget, a remaining budget of two hundred and twenty point one million. For buildings and construction and upcoming projects. Projects currently in construction are shown here and include infrastructure, Discovery Lab, which is in closeout. Marauder Complex, Student Services, Swing Space Two and the main entry. The total budgeted for these projects is a hundred and eleven point seven million. And taking that from the remaining two hundred and twenty point one million leaves one hundred and eight point four million. That a hundred and eight point four million was allocated between the gym renovation, Cedar Hall and the Commons initially. In the May construction update, we updated the board on rising costs and proposed an alternate project plan. Assuming we would not have sufficient funding for the Commons, which was a new building intended for student life and included a new cafeteria. Bookstore and space for student groups. Based on that plan and assuming we'd had funds, we'd have funds remaining. We added five hundred and seventy-five thousand for the outdoor fitness center with a portion being paid from HERF. The first table is a slide from the May construction update. And showed the potential impact of inflation on those projects which had not yet been bid. At the time, we were expecting a shortfall of eleven point five million. Adding in the five hundred and seventy-five point nine thousand for the outdoor gym meant the projected deficit. If we proceeded with building the Commons would be twelve point one million. With President Zalit coming on, coming on board, we explained the projects, provided the status on each project and provided details on the budget allocations. We also informed her of our plan to replace the Commons. President Zalit asked for a scenario that would allow us to keep the Commons. Since the funding available is a fixed amount and many of the projects have funds committed, the options were limited. With the record amount of scheduled maintenance funding provided in the twenty-two, twenty-three enacted budget. And the HERF funds that would support many IT initiatives, it makes sense that the district consider the use of funds at this time that were intended. For the MNO endowment and the ITS project for completing another building. The ITS portion of the project was not budgeted for any existing project, so no projects would be impacted by reallocating those funds. Shown here is the allocation of scheduled maintenance dollars provided by the state for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two. As well as for twenty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three. The district has up to five years to spend these funds at a minimum. The total allocation for physical plant and instructional support for the past year and the budget year is thirteen point six million. And assuming eighty percent of the twenty-two, twenty-three amount is used for scheduled maintenance. That means the district has ten point nine million available that it can use through twenty-six, twenty-seven. And through. Twenty-twenty-nine, the obligations can be paid. So actually seven years to make those payments. Per guidance from the Chancellor's office. This was information that was not known to us in May. During the last construction update, or the option would have been presented to the previous president as it was to our current one. The table below is the annualized amount showing that we'd have more than sufficient funds for scheduled maintenance projects through twenty-six, twenty-seven. Shown here is the language from the resolution specifying that the board restricts up to thirty-five million of measure AV proceeds. For the MNO endowment. The language in the resolution allows for the proposed reallocation of the ten point five million. Towards construction of the Commons. The amount currently in the endowment is twenty-five point two three million and that amount would stay in the endowment. This plan simply doesn't transfer any additional measure AV proceeds into the endowment. But continues to transfer the interest earned into the endowment. The end result is that the endowment still gets fully funded, but it grows through accumulated interest. Instead of through a transfer of ten point five million. This plan allows us to eventually fully fund the endowment, but also complete a new building and give us the Commons. The table here shows how the endowment will continue to grow if we reinvest interest earned. We saw this plan as a win-win that would allow us to have a building for our student groups in the heart of campus, but also keep the endowment. And now I'll provide an update on the measure AV projects. Beginning with completed projects, swing space one allowed for the demolition and construction. And this project included modulars for additional classrooms and office space includes buildings T-three-hundred, T-four-hundred. T-five-hundred, T-seven-hundred and T-seven-hundred-one. The project was completed in May of twenty-twenty. The Palmdale Center, this project renovated fifty-five thousand square feet and houses our services. And it meets the needs of the Palmdale community, offering classrooms, laboratories, library, a learning center, bookstore, student services. The project was completed in March of twenty-eighteen. The campus security building, this is a fifty-six hundred square foot building that houses security and serves as the district emergency operations command center. The project was completed in April of twenty-twenty-two. Sage Hall provides tutoring and instructional space for individual and group instruction. The building is thirty-two thousand square feet and provides. Classrooms, computer lab, flexible and interactive learning environments. The project was completed in December of twenty-twenty-one. Infrastructure and photovoltaic relocation includes, will take relocation, includes various infrastructure and utility upgrades. Throughout campus, the intersection and bus stops for the new main entry off of Thirtieth West is also part of this project. We anticipate that portion of the project to be completed in November of twenty-two. Discovery Lab is a thirty-five thousand square foot technical education facility that supports welding, fire technology, electronics programs and avionics. There are a few items remaining, but the grand opening for this building was on May twelfth and fall classes are in session in the building. The Student Services Building is on track for completion in December twenty-twenty-two. The building will provide fifty-eight thousand square feet for enrollment. The building will provide fifty-eight thousand square feet for enrollment, counseling, financial aid, health and veteran services. Move-in of staff is expected to occur in January of twenty-three. The Outdoor Fitness Center, our newest project, sits to the west of the stadium and south of the Marauder Complex. It'll allow athletes to continue training in an outdoor environment. Substantial completion is expected this month, with the space expected to be occupied in November. The Marauder Complex provides twenty-two thousand square feet of usable space at the Marauder Stadium. It includes team locker room, restrooms, training space, laundry equipment, and meeting and office space. The first phase buildings are occupied, and the second phase project, which includes the MC One Building, has run into delays due in part to staffing issues with our previous construction management firm. Once we have a CM firm in place, we can bid out the remaining work to have Phase Two completed. At this time, we expect Phase Two to be substantially completed in March of twenty-three. Swing Space Two allows for the demolition of existing spaces and Mesquite Hall, Yashida Hall, FA Four, and includes the T six hundred modular south of the tennis courts. We expect the project to be completed in August of twenty-three. Now moving on to upcoming projects, the Gym Renovation reprograms the existing facility for space utilization. It'll undergo a complete modernization of building systems and finishes. This project is split funded between Measure AB and the state, which will pick up sixty percent of the total project cost. At this time, the anticipated completion date is May of twenty-four. We asked for an update this morning from the Chancellor's Office. They expect it to be out of the Department of Finance any day, but it wasn't today. Cedar Hall is a three-story, sixty-five thousand square foot state-of-the-art building that will house classrooms and faculty offices, and will include a dedicated boardroom. The building will be built on the existing footprint of this building, and construction will start immediately after this building is vacated. We expect this project to be completed in January of twenty-five. And finally, the Commons, which is the building discussed earlier in this presentation. This building will be a forty-seven thousand single-story building and will be the core for student life and college activities. It'll include a full kitchen and dining facilities, college bookstore, cafeteria, and space for student groups. The building is currently in DSA. And looking forward, we look forward to another issuance of Measure AB, which will allow us to continue to make progress on our projects. We look forward to continue work on the Facility Service Plan, which replaces the Facility Master Plan. The Facility Service Plan will update our campus plan and allow us to consider space utilization and the needs of our campus after the pandemic. And then finally, we look forward to working on and developing sustainability initiatives. The community is looking to ABC to take a lead on sustainability, and we're looking at options for additional solar panels, additional charging stations for electric vehicles, ways to reduce water consumption, and other initiatives that'll help ABC do its part to protect the environment. Questions?
You mentioned that we had ten million dollars for maintenance that we got from the state, ten million dollars. Remember that back then?
Yes.
Okay, ten million dollars, right?
Approximately nine, but.
Okay. Could, could that money be used right now to renovate the cafeteria and have the cafeteria function?
Part of that money could be used for scheduled maintenance in the cafeteria.
Right, it could be used.
Part of it, part of it could, because there are restrictions on scheduled maintenance projects. So we can't do improvements to certain things. Some things are considered capital projects, some are scheduled, considered scheduled maintenance. The scheduled maintenance piece could be used, but we cannot take on capital projects with that funding.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say that personally, I'm very, very excited to see the Commons back in the plan. Every, every month, at some gesture or some point in time, we talk about our student enrollment here. Yet, this is a building that will engage our students and provide them a building where they can have their student life, where they can feel pride in going to this building, and I, I just think we're doing a huge injustice to the students that attend here by not, by second guessing ourselves, by not wanting to place this building on the campus of ABC for the future and for future enrollment. I, I think it's a must. I think it's a great move on this college's part.
Thank you, trustee.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to add, yes, I love the comments. It's actually, it hurts my heart to see it postponed, but I trust in your decision and the president's decision, and I would hope to see it in the future, definitely. Then, I think you said maybe by twenty twenty-five or that, something else.
Absolutely.
You know, I would definitely come back just to see the comments. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Item eleven point four is Presentation of Bond Market Update.
While we're waiting for the presentation to come up, I want to first thank you all for allowing us to present. President Zalit, very nice to meet you, at least through the glass formally, and members of the board, members of the community. My name is Frank Vega. I have served as the college's bond underwriter. Since two thousand and seven, I've been involved with every financing that the college has done for now more than fifteen years. I'm only slightly outdone by that gentleman on the screen. That is David Casnoca. David has been the district's bond lawyer since two thousand and two, since the first bond measure. So between the two of us, there is more than twenty-plus years of institutional history and, and experience working with the college. So on behalf of David, thank you. David, we, we can see you. Good evening. So I'll give you a very brief presentation, a little unique tonight in that you have two items before you, one of which, as President Zalit mentioned, is, is an informational item. We will come back at the next board meeting if you wish to proceed with the formal approval, the request for approval of the Measure AB Series C like cat. This will be our third series issuance. Tonight, I'm going to go through some general market slides and set the tone, not only for that, for that initiative, but also for the certificates of participation, the land acquisition, a lease purchase, which we're going to proceed with in the next thirty to sixty days. I apologize. I know it's hard to see, but just let me give you as best I can. In fact, I'm going to need my glasses for this. This is your assessed value. This is the community update. I just want to let you know that the new values, both from Los Angeles County and Kern County, have been released. The college's tax base is now over forty-four billion dollars. That is the highest it has ever been in the history of the college. Now, a lot of that is just due to high, high home prices, growth in businesses. But it's always nice information to share, because what it shows is that economic activity and the tax base for the college is robust, it's stable. We give a history here, you know, the last time we were in troubling economic conditions in two thousand and seven, eight, nine, we did see a decline, but what we didn't, what we noticed is that even during the pandemic, we think this is a more stable, these are more stable conditions for the district and for the community. You weren't subject to those sudden swings up and down in housing prices, even when people weren't working, even with there were concerns on economic activity. We think that's a good sign, because as this looming recession continues to be on the forefront of most economists, it's quite possible we could see a slowdown in economic activity throughout the country. We think the Antelope Valley is well poised to withstand that this time around as compared to two thousand and seven, eight, and nine. The only thing that's relevant here as well on this page is there is a formula that identifies in law any community college's debt capacity, and we kind of view this as a, a, a way to measure, are we burdening the community with debt? And the answer in this instance is a resounding no. Formula would allow you to go up to, boy, it's even hard for me to see here. I think over five hundred million. We have a net capacity, meaning if you take your legal authority and subtract, if we take your legal capacity and subtract every bond that the college has ever done, you have over seven hundred and thirty-three million dollars of bonding capacity. We think of it as almost like your credit card. If your credit card limit is ten thousand dollars, you are so far below it, you're not anywhere close to approaching what would be considered high debt levels for any community, let alone a community college district. These are the updates to Measure AB. Just as a reminder, community colleges are allowed to tax the community up to twenty-five dollars per the one hundred thousand of their taxable value of a home. So if someone has a taxable value home of two hundred thousand dollars, they would pay in a proximate property tax of fifty dollars. So twenty-five dollars is the rate per one hundred. Every time a home is assessed by the county assessor above a hundred, it's a multiplier effect. But the law allows you up to twenty-five dollars. We are well below that this year. Our final tax rate for the current year is nineteen dollars and sixty-two cents, leaving us capacity to sell more bonds for Measure AB. Another important point from the slide prior is we always look at trends. Trends are very important, but they're not always the only determining factor for future projections. We take the historical averages on your community values, that was from the prior page, and we use that as a way to gauge, how should we project growth in the future? When Measure AB was, was put together in two thousand and sixteen, we had assumed growth of four point five percent. On that prior page, you would have seen the college over the last twenty-plus years has averaged closer to five percent. So much like Mr. Bar, when he's putting the budget together, we budget very conservatively, and we grow our way into a more efficient bond program, and that's what you see here. Tax rates that are below what was told to the community, tax rates which are far lower than when we originally presented Measure AB to the voters, a debt burden that's also lower as well. So these are all good things. I, I promise this is all good information, or at least positive information as it relates to debt and the bonds. So on schedule, this next page. As I mentioned earlier, a bit unique in that there will be multiple steps for this particular issuance. If Mr. David, I don't know if you'll be able to jump in in a second here. David will explain to you what you're voting on tonight under the certificates of participation financing, as well as the first reading of bond documents for Measure AB. But on the financing side, all we're, all we want to relay to you here is the following. Should you decide to move forward and approve this tonight, we will present the college's credit to the rating agencies this week. We would expect a rating in approximately seven to ten days. We intend to go into market. Again, this all presumes that you want to proceed with this. We will go to market at the beginning of October for the certificates of participation. We will lock in the rates. The dollars should be delivered. I think we have October twentieth. So funds will be delivered to the college on October twentieth. Concurrent with that issuance will be the next phase of Measure AB, the Series C bonds. Right now, due to market conditions, we are looking at a financing of approximately fifty-five to sixty million dollars. I can certainly get into that in a moment if you have questions. But we think, just given the rate environment today, it's probably best to go with a slightly smaller issuance, not to lock in this high cost of funds today, and let's let these sort of troubling times, these headwinds sort of pass through, and we can revisit the final issuance of Measure AB, which would be the Series D like dog in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. That would conclude at least the schedule portion of, of what we are proposing. But before we turn it over to questions, David, do you want to highlight a couple of the items as it relates to the documents?
Sure. Again, for the record, my name is David Casnoca. I'm a bond partner at Straddling, Yoka, Carlson, and Roth in San Francisco. There's two items on the agenda tonight. First is the approval of a resolution authorizing up to ten million dollars of certificates of participation. The district has done COPs before. These are non-voter approved evidences of indebtedness that are secured by appropriations from the general fund. And so the asset that's being pledged for the COPs is the Applied Arts Allied Health Building. So in a sense, we're taking a home equity loan out of that facility and applying it to reimburse ourselves for the costs that have been expended associated with the purchasing of real property that someday may be the site of a student housing project. So those documents are being approved tonight, including all of the legal documents, the site lease, the lease purchase agreement, the trust agreement, the preliminary official statement, and the form of certificate purchase contract. The resolution delegates to the staff the authority to complete the transaction subsequent to board approval. Also on the agenda tonight as an information item are the legal documents associated with the issuance of the next series of Measure AV, VC bonds. This is an information item, because the bonds include the sale of capital appreciation bonds. And the law requires that those types of bonds be approved in two steps. One, information, so that the board can appreciate the added cost associated with the sale of capital appreciation bonds, and you'll see that comparison in Exhibit B to the resolution. And then we'll come back with the identical documents at the next board meeting and seek your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions once Frank concludes his slideshow.
Any questions? Questions, guys? Michael?
On page three, Mike? On page three, you talk about the assessed value of nineteen point six-two for a hundred thousand assessed value. And you used the illustration of a house that's two hundred thousand dollars. There ain't no houses that value like that. Frame houses are going for four hundred up there, and nice houses are going for six or eight hundred thousand. So that means that you pay almost twenty-five dollars per hundred thousand assessed value. Is that correct?
That is correct. And again, it's taxable value. You will be surprised. There are still folks that have owned their homes since the passes of Prop thirteen, so there are taxable values that are far less than market value. But you are correct. As housing stock turns over, as housing prices go up, and we all know in the valley, that has certainly been the case the last four to five years. A home for five hundred thousand, so let's, 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 let's go high. A five hundred thousand dollar home would produce a tax of five times nineteen, so just a little under a hundred dollars. That would be the portion that you owe LA, Los Angeles County, every December tenth and April tenth, if you wait till the last day to pay your property taxes like I do.
Okay, now, we talked about a three hundred and fifty million dollar bond measure, right? What is that after you add all the interest after thirty years? What is that, seven hundred million?
You know, that's, that's a, it's a great question. The, the estimate at the time in two thousand and sixteen, what's considered best practices is about a debt ratio of two to one. So for every dollar you borrow, you're repaying two principal and interest. This is not exact, but we had estimated approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. You know, I, I think it may have been closer to like seven hundred and twenty. We, I think we were a little conservative in our estimates as far as higher interest rates. You know, as we sit here today, now on this page, if I may, sir, this is, again, going to be hard to read. This is historical interest rates going back the last ten years. This is actually the last page of the book. So when we've sold Measure AB bonds, the original issuance in two thousand and seventeen and the most recent in two thousand and twenty, we've been able to take, take advantage of conditions. Let me see if I can do this. Do I have the laser? It's hard for me to, let's see. There we go. So we sold bonds, and we took advantage of low interest rates here, and we took advantage of low interest rates here right before the pandemic. So our actual debt ratio right now is closer to one point six to one. I do not have the exact number. I can get that to Mr. Bar, and we will, can provide that to you tomorrow. But I could tell you to the penny, the current total debt outstanding attributable to Measure V, both principal and interest. What I can say, because we've been able to take advantage of market conditions, it is far lower than two to one right now. So we are ahead of schedule as it relates to what was originally presented to voters. Again, I want to give you a straight answer. I don't have the number exactly on hand, but I can tell you our debt ratio today for Measure AB is closer to one point six. is closer to one point six to one versus the near two to one that we presented to voters in two thousand sixteen.
Okay, um, now, if you, you have to sell the bonds to get money. What, what are the denominations of bonds? Five thousand, ten thousand?
Great question. So for these bonds, for both the certificates of participation and for measure A V, they will be sold in five thousand dollar denominations.
And can you estimate what the interest rate would be on that?
Um, so you see here, as, as we've gone up and as we've seen conditions sort of in two thousand twenty-two, um, deteriorate as far as, as recent trends, you know, we're still well, uh, below or well at our historical averages. Right now, I would assume for a twenty-year bond for certificates of participation, we would assume a twenty-year interest rate of approximately four to four and a quarter percent. Um, that's tax exempt. So for an investor for.
Is that, is that federal tax or state tax?
It is both. So for, for these bonds, for both series, uh, the certificates of participation and the measure A V bonds, they will be both state and federally tax exempt.
And who buys these? Uh, mostly in, uh, investment firms, banks, or?
So what we've seen in, in this market and under these conditions is you are seeing bond funds participate. Um, the, the appetite for bonds has waned a bit. Um, in the past, we would have seen insurance companies, bond funds, professional retail, professional high-money net worth investors. Um, today, it's mostly bond funds and insurance companies. The individual, uh, in, uh, investor is starting to come back. It's, it's a point that I also would like to, um, to pass along. When we did the last bond sale for measures, uh, for a series B, we, um, the financing team paid for and took out an ad in the local press, in the Antelope Valley Press. We made free participation as far as people could establish accounts, local community members can buy bonds. We will do the same here, both for the certificates of participation and the measure A V bonds. Um, five thousand dollars allows you to participate in the bond sale. We haven't seen robust investor, uh, local retail investor participation, but it's an option that we want to make available and, and people can pursue it if they wish.
Would you go to the local bank or institution to do that?
So we actually, it, it's, it's another great question. Um, local banks generally will participate, but what they're looking for is they're looking for a bond that's going to be, uh, a short-term investment, a three-year bond, a four-year bond. Not to get into the weeds, everyone, but when we sell these, we're not just selling one bond. We'll sell twenty bonds, and we'll have a payoff schedule, much like you would on your home mortgage. We're going to pay off principal every year and interest along with it. Those type of banks that you're referring to, local community banks, are looking for shorter-term investments. So we can find a buyer locally that wants a five-year bond or a six-year bond. Absolutely. And in fact, we can give priority when we sell them so that local investors get the first call on the bonds. So if some major bond fund in New York wants to buy the whole thing, we, under our order process, would make sure that local investors, whether it's a local bank or an individual, would have the first right to purchase them. That's something we've done in the past, and it's something we can do now.
Look, what level of, uh, individual participation you have before? Like ten percent or whatever?
Um, I think, um, specific, now, this, I'm trying to remember this. We had individual retail participation. I don't recall it off specific zip code. I do know in California, so not necessarily within the Antelope Valley, but within California, I think we had less than five percent participated individually. But if you'll, if you'll indulge me, that was because when we sold the bonds and the last issuance was here, for a local individual investor, even though it's tax-free, you were getting a two percent rate of return. We were selling bonds at two percent. It's very, very hard to convince, convince individuals to invest when they're only getting two percent back on a ten-year bond or a twenty-year bond. Today, it's more likely to attract and to appeal local investors because now that's four percent, and it's four percent, again, tax-free, both state and federal.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Uh, before we go, David, anything else?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to twelve point one, uh, report of closed session action. A motion made by Michelle Harvey, seconded by Barbara Gaines. For the five oh vote, the board approved the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Superintendent President annual goals, and that will be found on the A V C website as of tomorrow. Okay. Moving along to the consent agenda, and I'm going to ask that item thirteen point three be pulled, and that we have a motion that will, um, engage that.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Um, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda thirteen point three? Appointment of administrators, faculty, and classified personnel. Have a first? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Advice?
Prove.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with five oh.
No.
Oh, four. I'm sorry.
Four.
Okay, now you have to do the next.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Everything thirteen point one, thirteen point two, thirteen point four through thirteen point twelve. So move. Do I have any discussion? Advice?
Prove.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to.
Good job. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to fourteen, fourteen point one, approval of the resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three slash three, declaring the futility of public bidding for a cloud-based portal and mobile app solution. Do we have a motion?
So move. Second?
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fourteen point two, approval of resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three slash four, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents relating to the sale and delivery of Antelope Valley Community College District certificates of participation, series two thousand twenty-two, and authorizing and directing certain actions in connection therewith. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows?
Yes. Okay. No.
We have a four one. Okay, we have, uh, moved item fourteen point three to, uh, to fifteen point two, which is, uh, informational. Okay, so I'm going to move to item fourteen point four, uh, approval of resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three slash six, authorizing participation in the S I S K self-insured schools of California Flex Plan and S I S K Flex Service Agreement. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is unanimously. Uh, item fourteen point five, approval of the memorandum of understanding between Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, A V C F T, and Antelope Valley Community College District regarding class climate. Is there a motion?
So move. Second?
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, item fourteen point six, approval of the two thousand twenty-two slash or dash two thousand twenty-three adopted budget. Do we have a motion?
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fourteen point seven, approval of the Internal Audit Services Plan for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Is there a motion?
So move.
Any? Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point eight, approval of executive search consultant R F P number A V C two thousand twenty slash two thousand twenty-one dash eleven, services agreement between P P L Incorporated, Antelope Valley College, for the Vice President of Human Resources and Vice President of Student Services Positions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, um, yes, Mr. President. Now, I understand that if someone is, uh, interim uh, vice president in one of these positions, they can't apply for the permanent position. So I would like, uh, up and I'd like legal counsel to research that and see if it's possible, um, that the people that are temporary in those positions may apply for permanent positions.
Sir, I can address that. It's, it's absolutely allowable. If someone is employed in an interim position, they absolutely may apply for the job.
They can.
They absolutely can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point nine, approval amendment of agreement between Collegiate Enterprises Solutions LLC, D B A Registry for College and University Presidents from November first, two thousand twenty-two through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fourteen point ten, approval of independent contractor agreement with Elise Elizabeth Deitchen. I should be able to do that, right? Okay. For consulting and leadership for the district's marketing office from September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, any second? You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen eleven, approval of participant agreement between County of Los Angeles for the Los Angeles Region imagery, uh, acquisition consortium project. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point twelve, approval to ratify two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three COVID-nineteen emergency conditions allowance application. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point thirteen, approval of amendment of agreement and assessable information management, A I M LLC, and do we have a motion?
So, second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item fourteen point fourteen, approval to enter into agreement with Bob and Me Productions Incorporated, D B A Lemon Lee for catering services. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes. Uh, what is the catering services for, Mr. President?
Trustee Reeves, this allows, um, the district to get catering from Bob and me, from the, from the enterprise that's listed there. It doesn't specify any particular event. It just allows, um, our staff or any events, um, for them to cater any events for our staff or any meetings that we might have.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
This was unanimously. Item fourteen point fifteen, approval to enter into agreement with Still Waters Food Service Incorporated for catering services. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point sixteen, approval of extension of contract with Smart Thinking for online tutoring services. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fourteen point seventeen, approval to utilize the foundation for California Community Colleges Consortium Agreement for the purchase of Adobe products and services. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point eighteen, approval to extend expiring three-year Evans and Southern, Southern Computer Corporation maintenance contract by an additional two years for planetarium equipment. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item fourteen point nineteen, approval to purchase Microsoft software products and services from Computerland. Do we have a motion?
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes. I'm wondering why we didn't buy the product directly from Microsoft and we're going to, uh, um, third-party. Does anybody have it?
Microsoft sells these products through third-party vendors, trustee Reeves.
That's the only way you can get it?
That is the primary mechanism that we, that we use, and that's the primary way that thi- this business is done.
Well, how, how did, uh, Computerland get picked? Did they bid for it?
Come, so Computerland, Computerland is a third-party, right? So we use them. They're a reseller. So.
Did you get bids from like, uh, Best Buy and places like that, or?
We usually don't go through, uh, retailers. We'll usually go through suppliers like this because they can support the volume, and then we have other service agreements. So, you know, we, we don't want to go purchase, you know, tablets from a place that won't be able to support them or won't be able to supply the amount that we need.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fourteen point two oh, approval to extend the use of N C P A Cooperative Agreement with Norstan Communications, Inc., D B A Black Box Network Services for Digital Media Management and Mass Notification Purchases. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point two, two one, approval to utilize the Omnia Partners Public Service Sector Agreement with AutoZone Parts, Inc. for the purchase of automotive parts and supplies. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fourteen point twenty-two, approval to utilize the Omnia Partners Public Service Agreement with Global Industrial for the purchase of warehousing, material handling, and production support. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point two three, approval to utilize Foundation for California Community Colleges Cooperative Agreement with Fisher Scientific for scientific equipment supplies and services. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point two four, approval to utilize Foundation for California Community College Colleges Cooperative Agreement with Amazon Web Services for cloud infrastructure and hosting services. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point two five, approval of agreement with Stay Green, Inc. for the removal of diseased dead and dying trees with her funds. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I, I'm confused. I, I thought those funds were for COVID. Is that correct? Um, and her funds, and we're using them to remove trees?
Yes, sir, trustee Reeves. So, um, they, those funds are intended for COVID-related purposes. What happened during the pandemic?
Right. Right.
Because those trees were not cared for because we had staff working remotely. They died, a lot of them. They became diseased. And, um, because of that, they have to be taken out. The loss of those trees was precipitated by COVID. And so we did get approval to use those, um, those, her funds for that purpose.
I've never heard of a tree dying of the COVID disease.
It was, it was a result of the pandemic. So it was a pandemic-related loss.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other, um, discussion, um, advice?
Prove.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fourteen point two six, approval to purchase professional IT services from Cumulus Technology and using her funds. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fourteen point two seven. Approval of consultant services agreement with SCCS Productions Inc. for live video of home athletic games. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point two eight, approval of two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three athletic winter sports schedules for men and women's sports. Basketball, non-traditional for softball, baseball, revised women's golf. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen point two nine, approval to utilize the California Multiple Award Schedules Agreements with Field Turf for Athletic Fields. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
Prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to take items fourteen point three oh, since they're basically coming down and they're all related to the construction. Fourteen point three oh, fourteen point three one, point fourteen point three two, fourteen point three three, fourteen point three four, fourteen point three five, fourteen point three six, fourteen point three seven, and fourteen point three eight. And this was a suggestion of my Mr. Reeves last month.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, coming down to information items, fourteen point, uh, fifteen point one. Okay, so we'll go ahead and that's information items. Look that over. Uh, we'll go to fifteen point two and we have two speaker comment cards. Uh, Diane Grooms, we'll, we'll go with Diane before Larry.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's nice to, uh, to be here today representing the Bond Oversight Committee. The flurry of phone calls and emails over the last three days has been horrific. And as President of the Bond Oversight Committee, I felt at a disadvantage. And I wanted to make sure that you were made aware of some of the things that we were not aware of as committee. Um, first off, the outdoor fitness center has never been on our project list. I don't know when it was added. And the commons being put on hold, we were never told that. Um, and I double-checked our agenda packets for the last three meetings, the last three quarters, and we weren't told this. It's very difficult to provide proper oversight when we don't know what's happening. Now, I was very excited to learn about the use of funds for maintenance um, so that we don't have to use the interest on the endowment fund. I felt that that was, that is a win-win. Um, but it would have helped to have had this information beforehand that even the commons was being considered to be put on hold. We've only been told that it's in DSA for review. So I would hope that as we give you reports and information and oversight, that you would give us, extend us the same courtesy and not have to wait for our next quarterly meeting before we receive that. Then it's easier for me to deal with the types of inquiries that I had. I do thank, um, everyone for their quick response, um, for, uh, giving me the information I needed today. I really appreciated that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Larry Grooms. That's a first. Okay, uh, we'll go down to reports and announcements, uh, Academic Senate, Mr. Van Rij.
Michelle reminded me to be short. Good evening. It's good to see you tonight. You know, as I sit here and I'm listening, I applaud the board's and the college's commitment to developing the space. I think that's important. I'll use the word that, uh, the barber used, pride. And I applaud that. I think it's important for all of us to be in functional, updated, current spaces. But the thought comes to me more important than the physical space is the investment that we put in each other. It is the investment that we put in our staff, our faculty, our administration, all who work here. As we look forward to that, buildings don't be build people. People do. Let's make sure that as we focus on Measure AV, as we focus on the development of our campus, that we are also looking at the development of our infrastructure. Let's look at our departments. Let's look at our offices and the staffs that we have so that the work that we do in those buildings is even more critical and more important than the building itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anno Valley College Federation Teachers, Dr. Jason Bowen.
I'm still a new faculty union president. And I tell every, you know, I get asked the question often, actually, how's the job? And I say, I'm having the time of my life. Frequencies drop with that, but I'm having the time of my life. It's certainly a, a challenging job, extremely fulfilling. It's all encompassing, meaning it's, it literally is all day. It helps when I have resources available to me to do the job that I've been asked to do. So in particular, I'm grateful for the past presidents who still, uh, make themselves available to me, uh, Dr. Aurora Bird and Dr. Scott Lee. It also helps when I have such a magnificent team, uh, the, the executive team. Uh, and then, you know, the members of the negotiation team, our membership director. They are unbelievable people, extremely competent, extremely hardworking, and they go above and beyond in what they do. It also helps when I have the privilege and the honor of working with such a magnificent president of our college. Now, I want to say to Dr. President Zulett, thank you for your leadership and thank you for your hard work and for listening. Uh, I've been able to sit down with President Zulett and present issues and concerns. I've been able to email her. And there was a particular issue that was extremely critical. Uh, not just to me, but to faculty as a whole, to the union leadership. And I emailed President Zulett in an afternoon to share with her the, the, the concern. And she replied that she had already managed the situation the morning before I even emailed. She, she had made the comment that it was her opinion that what was going on was just unacceptable. And so, uh, I just, I couldn't believe it, but this has been your pattern. This is not a single instance, but this has just been, uh, your habit. And it's not that we don't disagree or we don't have issues, but how I feel now is that union leadership can speak to you, faculty can speak to you, we can go, we can email you, we can meet you personally and, and discuss an issue first before making, you know, making it a, a big issue publicly. So there are issues that we need to discuss, one being pub seg. But we'll talk, I'll, I'll speak to you personally about it. Uh, there's issues of faculty discipline that concern us, but that's something that we can discuss. And I'm looking forward, uh, to talking to you about it. And it's not just President Zulett, but it's Vice President Howard, uh, Vice President Gar, Vice President Rivera, and then of course, General Counsel Bridget Cook. It's been a pleasure learning from you that it's okay to talk first. We don't need to make a big issue about things. We can later. But, uh, so that's what I want to say is I'm grateful to work with such an amazing administration. And again, it's not to say we don't have considerable challenges ahead of us. We do. But there's groundwork laid where we can all work together to get it done, get things done. So the federation, you know, so just another, a couple of items here. We're excited that the MOU was approved. And, uh, we begin negotiations this Thursday to, to negotiate a new contract. So we know that's going to take a lot of time. It's going to be a lot of work. The, uh, union team has already been putting in hours. I mean, again, again, they go above and beyond. So, uh, we're ready to, to negotiate the best contract that's to faculty, benefit of faculty, and to the district as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Anno Valley College Federation Classified Employees, Pamela Ford.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, Jason, you stole my thunder. Um, I too am very appreciative of our new leadership with Dr. Zulett. And there have been issues that have come up, as there always are, and she's always available by phone, text, smoke signals, whatever. And this morning, I was pleasantly surprised, well, actually shocked, because I got a text from her telling me that she'd already dealt with an issue that we have been dealing with for years. And that is the water leakage in this building and the mold and the sick environment that we, as those housed in student services, have to live in. And we have had air quality studies and all this other stuff done, but there's been no immediate attention until today to actually have people out looking at the buildings, finding other space so that staff can move to it. I personally am affected by it. I have asthma. And coming in this building with it all moist and mildewy makes me sick. And I am so thankful to you for demonstrating your positive leadership skills and mostly that you really do care and your kindness is showing through. I, I can't stress that enough. And ditto everything else Jason said. Um, I, um, understand the frustration of the employee who came up this afternoon to speak about salaries and, and the process for the classification committee. But I live in hope. And that is that we have new leadership. Just walking in this boardroom now is just such a totally different mode. It's just, it, it's more inviting. Um, I appreciate, well, I have to give credit to more than just Dr. Zulett. Our field rep is very much into building relationships. He believes that Arian Johnson believes that you cannot get anything done without building relationships. And so therefore, I've been, Bridget and I have been forging the path to try to work together. And so iron sharpens iron, right? So we're trying to work together. And so even, I, I think classified are becoming frustrated with me because I don't have to do what I did before. I have a person who cares, who I can sit down with and have her conversation and discuss the issues. Does everything get addressed overnight? No, because it can't. Even our, even in our real lives away from here, issues cannot be resolved overnight. But knowing that she's moving in the same direction, knowing that she's giving guidance to her leadership as to what she wants done. Um, for example, we've been, this perv has been drug out for eight and a half years. Her opening, uh, our opening meeting was, I want to get this settled. I want to get this off my plate. I want to move this behind us. To hear those words, I thought I was just going to faint dead away. Uh, and I'm glad to hear it. And, um, negotiations are moving along. It's a slow process. There was some relationship building that had to take place. Um, we're all working diligently. We too have good, a good team, Jason. And, um, they all work, we're all working hard to get things done. But I have to say, one other thing I appreciate is that I appreciate the faculty for the, for the outgoing president, the incoming president, they too work with us. And we have a lot of dialogue and open communication. And so it helps us all stay on the pa, same page and be aware that we're working towards the same goal. Um, I really appreciated the presentation that was given tonight, actually about the third-party retirement uh, plans. And this was information that we've been asking for, and this was information that we needed on the benefits committee in order to make an informed decision. So I too hope that, that, I didn't know some of the stuff that they had shared, some of the information. But I too hope that the district will take a second look before a final decision is made to make a change. I understand about the impact on our community and, um, you only need to look at the huge discount store that came into the valley a few years back and how many small businesses went out of business as, as a result, but they're all over town. I won't mention any names, but WT comes to mind. Um, so I just really, you know, it's our money that we're putting into these plans. And so we should have, us, we have a stake and we should have a say in the direction the college goes with this. So I too agree that there definitely needs to be more information. I'd like to receive copies of the handouts they presented tonight. And also those, that information go to the benefits committee and then another meeting be resumed so that we can hear their presentation in full and make a truly informed decision. And lastly, I want to commend our facilities, grounds, maintenance, and, um, even in the IT staff because they were here too and other classified on campus. But I do have some angst over a comment that was made tonight, and that is that these trees are leaving because those people weren't on campus. Uh, that's not what I was told. I, I kind of briefly had talked to doctors a little bit and, but it wasn't her. But I was not told that, that, that the trees are gone as a result of COVID because people weren't on, on campus, because that's not true. I don't know how facilities, grounds, uh, custodial, maintenance, I don't know how any of those people can work remotely. And so I just think that as we move into a new direction, we move into a positive direction. We look at kindness for our students, but for one another, that we be transparent with the information that comes forward. So I just want to thank you all for making this decision to bring in Dr. Zulett on board. And I'm looking forward to much, much more positive change. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. And, uh, Confidential Management Supervisory Administrator Employees, Michelle Hernandez. We have nothing, my goodness. Uh, Associated Students Organization, Oswaldo?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the board trustees. We had a successful Founder's Day this past Saturday. We gave out ninety-three tickets as well as free tacos and, um, cupcakes at the end of the game. as well as free tacos and um cupcakes at the end of the game. Um we got to see a lot of people that we hadn't seen in past years because of COVID. We also got to see many of the players come back. And we also got a new senator at ASO, Johan Kariaga. He is now the Senator of Enrollment Services. Um we also established our brand new ASO goals, so I'm going to share those with you now. Our first ASO goal is increase student engagement. Our second goal is to increase ASO awareness on campus, as well as number three, increase ASO representatives on our exec board. Um sorry, excuse me. We also had our club rush at the beginning of the semester. It was very successful. We had turnout of all the clubs come on um to in front of Library Plaza, as well as in front of the UHAZI Hall corridor. And we got to see many students, freshmen, and students from SOAR coming in from our feeder schools, join these clubs as well as part of my club too. So we got to see a good turnout on Club Rush, and we hope to have a much more successful Club Rush next semester. We also got to approve a grant, our first grant this year for the CNSA, for the Nursing um Association. So they will be traveling to Pomona, California on October fourteenth through the sixteenth, which will be paid through ASO funds. And as always, our meetings are every Friday at nine AM in the Student Lounge, uh being SCT one fifty. And we also have a special event coming up, so we're going to be having our homecoming game on October twenty-ninth of this year. And we're going to be celebrating with a pep rally on October twenty-sixth, that being that Wednesday before the game. We're going to be having food, music, and we're also going to be giving away, once again, tickets. And we're just going to be having a fun time with students, and we're hoping that students are able to come and enjoy some time, meet ASO senators, meet the players on team, and hopefully meet some faculty and teachers around campus. So thank you for your time. We hope to see you soon.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Foundation, Diane Knippel. Oh, you're wonderful, Diane. Thank you. Uh Office Superintendent President, Dr. Zalat.
Good evening, trustees. The past weekend has been full of remembrances, not only on ABC's campus, but also around the world. Significant changes in leadership have taken place as Elizabeth II passed, and for the first time in my lifetime, there's a King of England. Closer to home, our Veterans Affairs Team led the planning of Patriot Day twenty-two, and people gathered to remember the lives sacrificed on nine eleven and after, when those who ran toward the disaster suffered the long-term effects of their heroism. Tragedies bring forth change, and as poets often remind us, every ending is a new beginning. What we do with these beginnings is a privilege and responsibility not to be taken lightly. The pandemic caused great loss and pain to many in our own community, and we are living in the later days of this. How we emerged cannot be the same as how we entered. Lives are changed, students' needs have changed, employee needs have changed, and we are in the beautifully complex place of deciding who this community will be moving forward. And how will we remain relevant to our community and our service area? I've thanked the board before for inviting me to join this important work, and I believe that part of ABC's emergence into something newly re-envisioned is what you've invited me to bring to the table. Many leadership books say that for the first ninety days, you have fresh eyes, and that means that the perspective from the outside asks helpful questions, examines with other matrices or rubrics, and brings no preconceived or otherwise conditioned agendas to the work. This campus has already experienced my habits of questioning, and the response has been so very helpful. We are learning where to focus efforts. The campus is also experiencing the different perspective invited in when I was asked to join. We are a campus focused on service. Last month, I introduced in my report that we are turning away from the idea of master plans to the concept of service plans. So that service remains at the fore of our work. I'm grateful to the campus leadership for embracing ABC serves. And by leadership, I mean everyone in a leadership position, classified professionals, faculty, everyone who's leading, students. They've all embraced this notion. The acronym SERV stands for Service Equity Resources Vision Education Success. The thing that has our attention is the thing that gets done. So when we focus on ABC serves, we focus on service. Other plans have also been subject to fresh eyes and questions, and examining those plans made years ago, pre-pandemic, in light of current knowledge, which VP Brar has detailed in his presentations, it's led to strategic conversations that have revived the Student Commons Project. When there is opportunity to meet multiple ends, satisfy promises made to the community, and plan functional spaces that provide student opportunity for years to come, it is a sound decision to make that change. Before I close, I would like to announce something else related to homecoming. Launching a You Got Caught campaign. You got caught doing something good. So many people on this campus serve in ways that are meaningful, and yet they go unnoticed. From October first to October twenty-sixth, anyone who notices an act of kindness or service can go to the president's page, and there's a link you can click on, a QR code you can click on, submit that person's name and what they did, and at halftime on homecoming night, we're going to celebrate all of the people who serve at Antelope Valley College. Anyone whose name gets submitted will be recognized for the brave act of service that happens every day. This month's report may have been more reflective than informational, but I believe it's critical that we all understand that this college will continue to face changes. These changes will sometimes be self-imposed, but in this still uncertain time of COVID, some changes may continue to be imposed from the outside. What is most important is that we as a community of service continue to walk arm-in-arm in the same direction in order to serve students and be kind. And remember, if you want to go quickly, go alone, but if you want to go far, go together. Thank you.
Thank you. I did ask you our student trustee, Corey?
Uh, all right, one second. Right. Love the speech, Mrs. Presidente. Love the metaphors. Got to have them fresh eyes. Amazing. And I just want to start with a want to start with Welcome Week. I put in a lot of footwork, met a lot of students, engaged students that are really excited to be here on campus. They're excited to get involved within their, you know, their timeframe that they have available. I believe a lot of students, we do have quite a few students uh that are taking full-time classes that I'm in connection with. Uh I've been helping ASO advocate, you know, getting members, getting those applications filled out. And who knows, to the ASO, they're doing a great job. They're meeting once a week. That's amazing. And I do want to say, um, Mr. Oswaldo, that I have been working on a rally team. And I so definitely we need to link up so we could get this team together for that pep rally. I have football players, basketball players, uh dancers, all kinds of people that's ready to just, you know, just get active. So. And next, I would like to report on the Student Trustee Conference that I went to uh last month. So just point out three things that I, you know, gathered from that conference. The first one is that I learned that this position I'm in, or that anybody that's going to take my seat later on is going to be in. There's two perspectives to this. So they have a student-centered perspective, and they also have the student trustee perspective. So it's pretty self-explanatory. Student center is a tr- uh student trustee that would be out there connecting with their students in their face, going to ASO meetings, uh just advocating around campus, you know, saying what they can do. You know, the other side is the trustee perspective. Just like what y'all do, you know, just y'all don't come on campus. Y'all do y'all, y'all do y'all thing, y'all come here to the meeting. You know, and they say neither perspective is like right or wrong. I mean, neither is wrong, but of course we gonna, I'm gonna lean towards the student, student-centered perspective. Because I couldn't do this position without the students here at ABC. And next, there was a lot of networking there. Man, I met about a hundred, eh, maybe like seventy-five different student trustee members. Uh we got a Discord together. I met the uh student trustee for the SS Triple C. Uh she's real, the president, actually. Yeah, or they would call her the student trustee for SS Triple C. She's like over every, all the colleges, and she, we meet with her like once a month now. So we learn a lot of great things like different policy. And that's another thing I took from the meeting is that, you know, student trustees, along with the board of trustees, you know, we focus on policy. You know, we don't get involved in the day-to-day operational that stuff that's going on on campus. We focus strictly on policy. And with that being said, yeah, so I will definitely keep focusing on policy. For instance, I'll get to it next. So. And another thing is that we don't want to focus on just one policy and just put our, all our focus in that. And then forget that there are other policies out there that requires uh equal attention, less attention, or even more attention. So we got to keep that in mind as when we out here advocating on different policies. So and that, with that being said, next, uh lastly, I have the civic, uh I'm sitting on the civic voter and engagement committee. And we, uh y'all heard them mention earlier that we were working with the uh, with the senator, with the um uh Christie Smith and Mike Garcia to get them here on campus. Where uh I'm also working on s- more student-centered, uh more civic and voter-centered events. We have, we have a bill right here. It is AV nine six three. I don't know if y'all heard of it yet, but it is the Students Civic and Voter Empowerment Act. And we are required to at least throw three campus events throughout the year. And for this particular November election, each uh each community college campus must plan at least one event centered around civic and uh education, voting and or registering thirty days before the November general election. So that's what I'm focused on now is to, you know, to stay within this policy, get this event planned, and get voters signed up, bring education to the voters, and get them registered to vote. Find out who their senators are, find out who their assembly members are, that all be a part of that event in a Jeopardy-style uh type game. And that is all I have for y'all today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Reeves.
Yeah, um we had a great nine eleven uh ceremony last week, and uh trustee Michael Adams gave a very eloquent speech at the ceremony. We appreciate it. And we had a great football game last Friday. Uh the president was there, uh Vice President Rivera and his wife, and I was there. It was a great game. Uh toward the end, we started catching up a little bit, so I'll be going to Marotta Games. Thank you.
Um I just wanted to say to Ms. Hernandez, thank Melody for coming and talking with us. I think the Puntah group is so important. Back in January of this year, I read a report. It came from the Campaign for College Opportunity. And I wasn't familiar with them, but what I read in that report, I literally sent it out to all of my colleagues because we do some work on a college access program with students. And I just wanted to read um what was so striking about that, that it has been on my mind for nine months. Eighty-seven percent of Latinx nineteen-year-olds in the state have a high school diploma or an equivalent, you know, degree, but more than half of California's Latinx high school graduates are not eligible for admissions to the state four-year and public university system. And then it begins to talk about transfer rates and how if California is ever going to have success, they must see that it is intrinsically tied to the success of Latino children. And it's true. So I just wanted to reiterate how important those programs are and how important the work, Ms. Hernandez, that you do for student life. It's important. So thank you for that.
Miss King.
Um I just want to say that um tonight has been uh uh it's just been very interesting to see the the climate in this room and um uh I love the transformative change that I believe our community college is going through. Um I'm very, very humble and just very proud to be a part of it. And uh Dr. Zalat, I just wanted to say that I realize it, we have several days before October first, but the new bond between Pam and Bridget, that's, I think they've been caught doing something good, and I'd like to be the first person to
nominate them.
To get them on at halftime, if you could. Just saying, if you could, please. Thank you.
Well, second that. You guys are probably down smoking behind the gym, right? Yeah, all right. Uh this has been a long meeting. Thank you for hanging in there. And um I would say one thing, as far as the trees are concerned, for every tree we take down, we need to put up two. Okay, that's very important. So with that, we'll adjourn this uh meeting. We have no further closed session to October tenth. Thank you.